Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Towne Wayham tonight. Meetings Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019 at 6:30 PM. And we are at the multi-service center. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I wanna welcome new member Veronica Devenese. She's a local person, born and raised here. A guest who worked here. She has a lot of knowledge about things, so I wanna welcome her to the board. Start from my far right Veronica. Our clerk Jim Akabashi. Far left Jake Morrison. I guess Jake became a permit member today also as well, so he's a permanent, not associate no more. Attorney Jim Kendrick, our town planner Ken Buckland, and myself, the Chair Nazir Al Qulasi. Gonna start, we have some preliminary business to do. We have the minutes for October 24th, 2018, and December 12th, 2018.
I've reviewed the minutes and will approve them as presented. Make a motion to approve them as presented.
Second?
Both weeks.
Second.
Second by Jim. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stay. Alright, good. We have a decision for Robertson here and we never signed. Jim and Jake don't sign it. Alright, we're gonna go to the public hearing for 34-18, Steven and Cheryl Urashe, 9 Jordan Road. Counselor? That was never opened, right?
Correct.
Alright. What are we after, I'm sorry? 34-18?
Yeah.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on December 12th, 2018 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 34-18 for a variance from the requirements of Article 3, Section 320, Article 14, Section 1470 of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Steven and Cheryl Urashe, 9 Jordan Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, seeking to construct an accessory apartment and shed located at 9 Jordan Road, Wayham, Mass. That's on Assessors Map 114E, Lot PG14, in the R130 zoning district.
Before we open the hearing, Mr. Chairman, because I think you have to disqualify yourself from sitting on this matter, I'm gonna ask until we have a complement of five members to hear this matter.
Okay. Just a quick question, wasn't the accessory apartment went away?
It went away. That's correct.
So that's not gonna be discussed?
That's correct.
So you do not wish to go with four members?
Correct.
Well, so we're continuing? Okay, yes, so I guess we'll go to February 13th. Hopefully we have a fifth. Make a motion, somebody to continue.
So moved.
I have a motion by Jim, 34-18, to continue till February 13th. That's second by Jim. All in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Aye, opposed, abstained. 4-0, 0. Okay, 1-19, Jessica Nassif, 34 Hammond Street.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on January 23rd, 2019, 6:30 PM, room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 1-19 for a special permit variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622, and Article 13, Section 1352 of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Jessica Nassif, 33 Stockbridge Road, Hanover, Mass. 02339, seeking to construct a new 10-foot by 16-foot addition on an existing side yard deck located at 34 Hammond Street, Onset, Mass. That's on Assessors Map 2, Lot 233, in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
Very good. Name, please, for the records and address.
Jessica Nassif, 33 Stockbridge Road, Hanover, Mass.
Okay, so you wanna start telling us what you're doing, or do we look at the plans?
Yep, we currently had a deck that just came off the side of the house, and then there was a section that went down to the ground where the stairs were, and then the backyard is actually raised up, so that 10-by-16 section would just carry the deck to the backyard flat instead of having that.
Do we have a drawing of it?
Yep, should.
Picture of it?
Should.
Okay. Let us peruse this folder.
Alright, explain this to me again. Which deck?
So there was only one deck on the side of the, where the slider comes out on the side of the house, the, on the point independence.
The existing deck?
Yep, that's existing deck. So where that existing deck ended, there was just a section that had, that's where the stairs went down, and then there was a raised backyard. So what we're doing is carrying the deck across, so it just comes straight to the backyard.
So you're enlarging the deck?
Yes.
Right. And how far from the property lines you are?
I don't have a copy of that with me, but it is marked on there. It's not, that doesn't change at all.
Yeah, but you're enlarging the deck, you said.
Right, so it's closer towards the back property line, but not towards the side.
If this, if this hand-drawn sketch is accurate, it says 16 feet to the neighbor.
Yes.
Do you see it? 16 feet to the neighbor.
I think that's the...
It's a...
You're gonna add another 10 feet to it?
Yes.
Alright, I wanna, I'm just gonna start to get some comments from the members. Usually when it's a variance or special permit, and it's tight lots like this, we require a survey plan, so you're not encroaching too much, so we know exactly how far you're going. A lot of people think 10 feet, oh, I still have space to my neighbor, and when you do the deck, you're probably right at the property line. So it's always, we always do, when we do variance, special permit, for expanding the footprint of a deck or a house, we require a survey plot plan.
Okay, well, so when I spoke to the building inspector, what happened is, it's not necessarily the closeness to the neighbor, proximity to the neighbors, I'm just over by a few square feet on coverage of the property.
I understand what he said.
Oh, okay.
But we always, this is our rules pretty much, when it's a special permit or a variance, so it might be a variance, it has to be by survey plan, it has to be stamped by surveyor, plot plan stamped. So, because it's so critical, because by right, you can't have it. You need, you need permission, that's why you're here. So if it was by right, you could just draw this and go to the inspector and give it to you, but apparently you can't. For us to grant a special permit or a variance, we need that exact plan, because maybe some of the neighbors complain, and they say...
My neighbor's here.
I understand, but maybe someone say, oh, it says 10 feet, oh, but it's much bigger. I'm sure it's fine, but that's why we have, we ask everybody to do that. That's our rules pretty much. Okay, so I'll start, question Veronica, have a question?
Yeah, I don't think so.
No, Jim?
I'd like to see some photographs, front and side of the property before I make a decision.
Okay.
It's also an application, you have to have photographs for us when you apply for this, so you should have some pictures. Some of us usually go and check it out, but some don't have a chance. Jake?
I think you kind of put a little plan, and one thing you have a problem getting this, but in the past, we've had, this is just happening.
Okay.
Jake, you can do my guy?
Now it is. Sorry, I'll say that again. In the past, we've had a lot of stuff like this, and we always have them bring in a plan, and then it usually goes through, as long as the neighbors are okay with it.
Okay.
I would just echo what Jim said, I'd like to also see some photographs.
Okay, you wanna say something?
No, no questions.
Anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor?
I do.
Wanna come forward and state your name and address, ma'am?
My name is Kathleen Coyle, and I live at 5 Independence Lane. And I think it's my property that you're talking about, that's the neighbor's property.
Are you in a butter?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is a big family. And my living room overlooks the yard and that deck. So these guys, you know, they take turns being out on the deck all the time, because they didn't all fit there. I think it's a great idea for them to expand the deck, so that they can all enjoy the view at the same time.
Well, we believe so as well, you know, I'm sure she, they could use the deck, but we have to have plans, because like I said, this is a special permit, so everything has to be kinda perfect.
Yep.
And has to be documented properly.
So...
I don't think will be a problem next time if Mrs. Nassif would come.
So I would like also, and I'm sure you're taking minutes, but I'd like also to give you these. The 32 Hammond Street is a housing trust, and my two daughters are the trustees, and so those are their emails.
They support. They send a letter of support?
They send that and support.
And what street, what street do you live on, ma'am?
I live on Independence Lane.
You're on Independence, so you're the butter to the rear, you're, if I can describe...
She's the one that'd be getting 10 feet closer to it.
So the orange square here is the applicant.
Yes.
I would assume you're this lot, and then this is the one that you're sending me emails from.
This is, no, this is, that's the lot, this is their house, this is the other house in the lot here. Oh, no.
Do they have but, do they, excuse me, do they have but, do her relatives have but you on one side?
They combine the two lots.
Yeah, they're combined.
So, yeah, so this is the other house in the other lot, this is their house.
Okay, so you surround her?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
What do you need, also, the records?
Thank you, that's what I just wanted to know.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing this up. So one of them is...
One is Heather, and one is Jennifer, both trustees for that house.
Sincerely, Dad and I, Dad and I, I think they're the same. No, I can read. I got it. I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around.
Like who's who?
Well, I see one's concaten, one's been, um, redacted.
Well, this has nothing to do with the issue, this was another question she was talking to me about.
One's from Heather and one's from Jen. I see it. And the one from Heather states, hi Mom, officially I'm in support of whatever you and Dad and Paul and Sandy want. Thanks, Mom, Heather.
Yeah.
Okay, so that doesn't reference this property, but we'll assume that it's intended to.
My, my...
Okay. So maybe I need to read your email that caused that. Your email ahead of that was, Dad and I and you both as trustees receive a notice from the town for a hearing on January 23rd at 6:30 for a special permit variance for the deck that Jessica added last summer. You may remember that the building inspector gave them a cease and desist order last summer because the addition was bigger than the bylaws allow. I have the request for variance. I plan to attend to add my support. I'll bring any letters, notes that you might want to include. I think just responding to this email may do it, so let me know. And again, she responded, hi Mom, officially I'm in support. The other daughter...
I may before you go forward. See, this is one of the problems, because the, what the inspector said, that's why he gave you cease and desist, because it doesn't comply with setbacks, that's why you need plans.
Um, I, that's fine. I was just trying to avoid paying $1,500 to have someone come and draw the plot plan for...
Unfortunately, because we're a tight lot, you have to...
I actually have a double lot that we've combined, so it's, it's one of the biggest lots in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
But you see what you've done now, is you've painted a picture in somebody's eyes that you tried to sneak it past us that a cease and desist was issued.
No, I have no problem.
Because it wasn't brought up, and now it comes out in an email. So we're not gonna accuse you of trying to sneak anything by us, but I'm just trying to tell you the way the picture comes out to the public when they hear this this way. So we're trying to make sure that you're covered.
I think they wouldn't know they needed one.
It's just replacing, you know...
Yeah, a lot of people don't know.
So the other sister writes back in an email, I am support of the Chellman's building, a deck under their house in a manner that complements their home and improves the look and value to the home and the neighborhood. Those are the two emails.
Okay, anyone in the audience wanna speak against this project? I hear none, so do you wanna come back on February 13th with a plan?
Sure, yep, that's fine.
So, okay.
So you want a stamped plot plan?
Yeah, a surveyor.
Okay.
He'll show us...
You're gonna have to pay the $1,500 to an engineer and...
Tom, you wanna put a deck, he go show us your house and the lot, he show us how you're gonna do the deck, and setbacks and all that, and when we grant you the permit, we'll refer to that plan, so it's, and then the inspector's okay with that.
It's $1,500 to an engineer, or $7,000 to a lawyer to defend your actions, so you know, we're trying to save your money.
You guys are such...
Alright, so do we have a motion to continue for...
So moved.
Okay, motion from Jim for petition 1-19 to continue until February 13th, 2019. Have a second?
Second.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, case 5-0-0, see you February 13th.
I see I got somebody's passed back from the left, are there any more over there?
Two-19, Amy Rossi and Richard, thank you ma'am, thank you ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Amy Rossi and Richard Runce, 35 West Central.
I couldn't find persons.
We're on this agenda.
We're on the wrong agenda.
We can come up and look if we need to.
This, here.
Yep, and, and we're probably here at 2-19. Is that where we're at, 2-19? Yes, we are. Excuse me. The zoning, thank you Nazir. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on January 23rd, 2019, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 2-19 for a special permit, that extra one, for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622, and Article 13, Section 1335 of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Amy Rossi and Richard Runce, care of Margaret Ishihara, PO Box 71, 184 Main Street, Wayham, Mass. 02571, seeking to construct a new 23-foot by 10-foot 5, 10.5-foot rear garage, as well as replacement of an existing screen porch with a new porch and balcony above, located at 35 West Central Avenue, Onset, Mass., Assessors Map 1, Lot 700, in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
Thank you. Name and address for everyone, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Margaret Ishihara, the attorney for Amy Rossi and Richard Runce, the owners of the subject property.
Okay, now please...
May I proceed? So we have the plot plan here, just a general overview of the project. There's two pieces to it, so replacement of an existing screen porch with a new open porch with balcony above, so you should have in your packet...
Here, I'll make sets out of these. Are these four, four pictures all in?
There should be two color photos for the existing, and then there are two elevation for the proposed project.
There's one on this way. Lot 35, what lot is it, which one's the subject?
It's, the street address is 35 West Central, the Assessors Plan and Lot are Plan 1, Lot 700.
Oh, they put the address in there. That's Lot 700. Yeah, put the address in there, okay.
Yeah, to be honest, I haven't quite figured out with your maps online how to over...
They put the address, not the lot.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. So it's basically the corner of West Central Avenue and Fourth Street.
All right, so let's, let's continue.
So basically, you have in your packet photographs and propositions. So this is the existing front and side view.
Well, we'll pass it over now.
I think I left enough...
I've got the one, but they want some more. I couldn't tell with the black and white.
Yep.
Can you guys share already one of the...
It is easy to see on the color. So this is what it, this is the existing front and side view, this is actually a lot breaker. So please, right now...
Margaret, you need to use the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Bob.
It's okay.
The existing front and side view of the property. So the area that is going to be changed in the front is the area right here. So there is an existing porch at ground level, this is going to be opened up, it's a screened-in porch right now, and there will be a balcony above that. The front wall of the building, the existing front wall of the building, not the porch, but the existing front wall, will actually be pushed back, pushed back a bit. So if you look at sort of a before and after, hopefully after...
So may I ask, is that whole three-season porch coming right off, and a whole new deck, two-story deck being built in its place?
Yes, basically, it's going to look like this. So you have a...
I see it.
This is the architect's elevation view of what we're proposing to do. It does open up the front of that, makes it very attractive, I think, in my opinion. The, the other piece of the project is a garage addition. So you also have a color photo, this is it, showing the rear, the side and rear of the property. There is a kind of an existing paved area right here, there actually is one garage bay in the existing building. What we're proposing to do is to extend this out into the backyard to put in the garage addition with a second floor on top. In your packet, you have the proposed elevation for that area. So this is what we propose to do in the back.
Where the garage doors are, right now, there's a fire pit in the backyard.
I don't think there's a fire pit.
There's not, that's, that's, that's not what it, that's...
There's a blacktop there.
It's a blacktop area.
It's the blacktop area, okay.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Not where the, not where the fire pit is. It's basically going to be a straight extension back from the existing building, if you looked at it from a bird's eye view.
All right, have you had the surveyor do a plot plan?
Yes, you should have that in your packet.
I was looking for...
It's at the very back.
I can't read myself for some reason. Oh.
The first thing I have is...
Yeah, slightly different perspective.
Okay. Okay. All right.
So basically, the area that I'm talking about in the front, on your plot plan, is this area right here.
Yeah.
Okay, this is West Central Ave, this is Fourth Street, the area that's proposed to be the balcony and the open porch will be here. If you look at your plot plan, you can see there's a dotted line right here, that's actually where the existing front wall is, and so that would be pushed back to where the dotted line is right here. So it opens, opens it up and pushes the permanent wall, if you will, back a bit into the wall.
But that would be the area of the deck, correct?
Correct, that's correct, yes. Yeah, it will be taken up, it's just the wall's gonna be pushed back.
So the, the, this is existing where the black, all that purple and shaded existing, but you're bringing it back to the black line?
Correct, that's correct. The black dash line is where the proposed new wall will be. The purple dash line is where the existing front wall is.
But the new deck is gonna replace the existing three-season porch.
Correct, correct.
So the black dash line isn't gonna be the closest structure to the street?
No, that's correct, it will not be, that's correct.
The deck will be...
The deck will be the closest, and it'll be the same distance as it is right now. It's, it's proposed to be, it's right now 6 feet...
You're ripping an old rickety porch down, and you're putting a structurally better two-story deck in its place.
Right, right, with the same six-foot setback as, as exists.
The garage, the proposed garage addition, you have already a garage, you add into it?
That's correct. So the proposed garage addition is fairly obvious, but it's right back here. So there are, basically, from the Zoning Board of Appeals, there's actually three issues that you have in front of you.
We have lot, lot coverage and setback are two that I can think of right off the top.
Lot back, and, well, okay, so you have, right, so issue number one is the, the front setback, which we're proposing to keep the same at 6 feet. But it is a alteration to the building, so the building inspector in the denial letter said, you need to get a special permit for that.
We have to decide if it's more non-conforming or less non-conforming, which I got it.
You have to, well, no, you have to consider, you have to consider whether it is substantially detrimental, not whether it's more conforming or not, but an argument in favor of it is it keeps the existing setback, we're not trying to push front...
There's no substantial increase in the nonconformity.
It's just a matter of if these guys, before they were restricted from yelling at all the passersby's because there was glass, now they can heckle and jackle all they want.
Anyways, my experience with my clients is they're not heckling types, but in any event, it's...
I didn't think so either, but you know, I figured, at least get them, at least get them smiling, you know, they looked a little nervous.
Well, it's, it's, the plan is to, for them to move here and make this a year-round home, and right now, it's not in such great condition, they're anxious to get moving forward so they can move forward on this project. But in any event, no, it's good, it's good to get everyone smiling.
Okay.
The coverage issue, you have just a 6% increase?
Correct, so the coverage issue, currently it's 43%, which is actually not conforming. We're going to just increase it 6% to 49%, and that's primarily because of the garage addition. The porch thing doesn't really, doesn't, doesn't increase the percentage cover. And with respect to the percentage cover, first of all, it's not huge, it's 6%. Secondly, we're covering an area that basically already has an empty surface on it, we're not going out into metal somewhere and trying to go out and put it up. So there's that, there's that issue.
Can you tell me, I'm sorry, can you tell me where the current garage is?
The current garage would be...
It's, it's within the footprint of the existing house?
Yeah, it would, it's in roughly...
Basically beside what you're gonna add to, just expanding that?
Right, correct, exactly, yes.
And is there a tar driveway there right now?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're looking at the back of the garage in this picture, we're looking at...
Yes, you are, as I said, it's a slightly different perspective.
The side in the back.
Right, right, right.
On the coverage, if you have a tar driveway, I don't think we're adding coverage to driveway car, I mean, I don't think...
They're adding a second floor onto something, right?
I know, but...
No, they're adding right out here, and there'll be a second floor on it, but...
I know, one, one at a time.
Sorry.
On the coverage, I don't think it's a problem, because it's already drive, tar driveway. So the question is that it needs a variance regardless, it's the setback, section 6, Article 6, Table 622. On Article 13, to increase the building with the second floor, section 1335, we'll see if the board feels it's a special permit versus a variance, and I believe because the neighborhood pretty much, they're all the same, I think a special permit would be preferred. However, we have to work on a variance for the setback. That's definitely a variance.
The rear setback?
The setback.
The one point five?
Yeah.
I don't, we don't have a plot plan here, do we, in this package?
It's in the blue in the back.
No, you should.
No, 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 I've got, I've seen that. I'm trying to figure out where's, where's, what's on lot six sixty-seven and where, I'm just trying to get it in the world.
Anyway, what, what do you guys look at? I want to ask the audience, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this project? Anyone against?
If, if I might, Mr. Chairman, on this issue, people in favor and against. We have in our application package, six letters from people who are in support of the project. There was a, a letter that my client sent to the neighbors saying, this is what we plan to do, you know, can you support us? And I just want to hand out to the board, I went through and I plotted out where the neighbors that wrote the letters in favor are located. If you look at the, the subject property, obviously, it's highlighted.
Yes, I have it.
If you look at the circle, the ones I circled in blue, those are the locations of the six people that sent letters in favor. So you can see they're very close proximity to the project itself and, and most critically, the woman that's directly behind on eight, Fourth Street, she, Ms. Caselli, is someone that supported this project. So the neighbors would like to, you know, see this improvement made, certainly with regard to, I've outlined in my memorandum, the ways in which we meet the requirements for a variance under forty, under forty-eight. It's a long, narrow lot, the existing building itself aligns, as you can see, you know, aligns this way, and, and so because of the alignment of the building and the long, narrow lot, we say that this is the location of the garage.
So if I might...
Yeah.
On this, that you handed out to us, it shows the subject property labeled number thirty-five, just for reference purpose.
Right.
And then it shows a number eight. You see the number eight?
Yes.
And that's the end of the house where the garage is going to be added, is that correct?
That's correct.
There'll be about a foot and a half or two feet between the garage and the property line?
That's correct.
Okay, so the pickup truck that we see in this picture is in the neighbor's yard? That's the neighbor's pickup truck, that...
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to...
I suppose that was your land.
Yep.
No.
And the neighbor supports?
And that neighbor, that neighbor is circled as an okey-doke.
She is in your pocket there, at, at Fourth Street is her address.
Alright, I guess the special permit part, I don't see a problem with it. Can you just talk a little bit, Counselor, about the statute for the hardship, something that we're all for?
Yeah, with regard to general laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section ten, I touched on briefly the circumstances related to soil condition, shape, and topography of land or structures, and I want to put a little bit of an emphasis on the structures as well. It's the combination of the shape of the land and the particular structure that's already on there. The uniqueness requirement, I believe, is also met by that same narrative that I just gave. With regard to the hardship, in order to have a economically feasible use of the property, you know, as a single-family home, it's, the hardship of not having the second, the garage addition would be an inability to get the cars, you know, off the road and, and inside. And I have to say that this is very interesting timing because my own car didn't start because it's not, it's outside, not in a garage. So it's something that would be a hardship to not have that ability to have not just cars, but also the things that we all tend to gather with our homes, tools, and that sort of thing, to have them inside.
Would it be fair to add that there's a very difficult parking situation in that section of onset? And to have the garage and have the cars parked in the garage would take a little bit of that burden off?
It, it does indeed, as, as people on, aware and people that visit onset know that there is a serious...
I had a guy throw a gallon of milk at me for parking in front of his house on that street one day, one day.
A gallon of milk, wow.
So I know how, I know how sensitive the parking is at that age.
You would, otherwise, it's not just having a closed space, you would have to park one of the cars on the road otherwise, right?
If, if nobody else did, that's the problem, there's no assigned parking on the street.
Yeah, no, I get that. My, my point is that it's, it's not just for the convenience of having it sheltered.
No, it's also just to get the cars...
A place to put it, period.
Gets it off the street.
Alright, we'll stick with the statue of the shape of the lot. The other thing's kind of irrelevant, irrelevant to a variance, so the shape of a lot is a good hardship. So I would say so. Okay, so what else, anyone else, you want to say something?
I, I thought that there was a driveway to the...
The driveway is coming in from the back. We're looking at the back of the garage, yeah, the cars inside that building.
There's a driveway, I'm sorry, yeah.
There's, oh, so where's the driveway?
That's the neighbor's.
That's the neighbor's driveway.
There's no driveway on their lot.
No.
Right, the driveway is on this one, we're seeing one coming in from a street over here.
Where do you park now?
There is a driveway.
There is a driveway.
We don't, we don't live there yet.
It's not in, it's not in...
But there's a driveway.
It'll be near the driveway.
Picture could be a little confusing to look at.
Okay. This area in here, I think, is used for, is used for parking currently. It is a little bit confusing, I apologize for the picture, that, that driveway that goes in this way is actually on this piece back here, with this in here.
Okay. Do you want to add something, Jake?
I'm very familiar, I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. Obviously, everybody wants parking, inside parking's great, but I'm a little concerned if everybody in this town starts doing this and going on top of each other, then there's going to be a real problem in that neighborhood. There's barely enough room right now in between the law lines, so that's all I have to say.
What do you recommend?
I mean, the first part of the project's really good, I think it looks great in the front. But I don't know, I mean, even if the neighbor's in favor, if we keep, continue to do this, it might be a big problem in that part of town, but I'm not in favor, not in favor right now, I'm just kind of undecided.
Let me ask a question, Counselor, at the garage, when you add this ten-four sixty-seven, ten-point-six-seven garage, how big of a garage is already in, in the house?
It's a, it's a very small, single bay garage. At one point, it was a garage and it was closed off, it's not currently being used as a garage.
So how wide is it?
Yeah, probably like ten feet, very narrow.
So you're trying to, to have two cars?
It's really, it's really tight for even one car right now, if you were to kind of open it back up and try to use it. They closed the prop, they actually covered it up with, they made it living space in that house before, they turned it into illegal apartments, it was a mess. So now we're uncovering, after we started doing some of the demo, under demo permit, the original garage, it was like unknown at first, and that's when we sort of discovered it was being used as that.
Okay, let me ask you something, what's, how many cars you proposing to park?
Try, try to get two in there, that's the proposal, yeah.
You get about ten, another ten?
Yeah, so it's a tight one, but it, it should, should, one, one, one garage door to make it a little easier to pull the two cars in, so.
Does this offer, adds to the setback?
No, it doesn't, we passed it by once and then...
Alright, Jake, do you have a suggestion, do you want to shrink it, or?
I mean, I'd, I'd hate to say shrink it, you know, they want to do what they want to do, so it's really up to you guys at this point, and like I said, I'm really undecided about it, I'd like to hear a little bit more.
Now, how far you'll be after you put the addition, like your property line for the McDonald Building, how far, how far the McDonald's house?
Up to the house.
Lot six-six-seven, do you know? Okay, I see it right here.
I think that's Gina's house.
Well, it's going to be at least eight or ten feet, because we show a truck parked in their yard, in that neighbor's yard in the picture.
And there, there is a shrub in between the two properties as well.
Yeah, the shrub, the shrub.
Do they have a letter of your support?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, Gina Caselli did support it.
Neighbor's letters, I should...
Alright, Jen, what do you think?
I mean, I personally, the, the, the fact that the, the neighbor, the director butter has no, supports it, really pushes it, me in favor of it. I think the, obviously, the other two issues, as we said, special permit piece, I don't have a problem with the porch or at all, or the slight increase in, in coverage. But, you know, I think the garage, it's, it's obviously pushes it pretty tight to the, but if, if that, if that a butter is, is speaking in favor of it, then really don't have a problem.
Yeah, my office had done a condition survey of eight hundred properties in onset. This particular one was identified as in condition that suggested it needed renovation. So this is the opportunity we have in, in people moving in and renovating their property, and I think that, that does it...
Will you change all the siding and everything?
All, all new windows, every, they, they put an extensive amount of money to restore this property.
Anyone else, you want to add anything? I hear none, let's move to close.
So moved.
Have a second to close?
Second.
Second by Jen, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Alright, on the, I would say on the relief of Article six, Table six-two-two for the variance, I believe the applicant had met the statute of a variance, the four conditions, the hardship, the uniqueness, and not detriment to the neighbor, and it would not, what you say about the bylaw, it doesn't really...
Nullify derogate.
It's not there.
Exactly, thank you, Counselor, doesn't derogate anything.
Nullify derogate.
So I would, I would say that's on the variance part. On the special permit, I guess you guys all agree on it, and...
Are we going to take one vote or two?
We could vote.
I, I'd say put it, bundle it as one, and it's either yes or no, personally. I just didn't know if there was any feel...
Well, the variance, we can put conditions, the special permit, you could put a condition. So let's vote the variance in first. So let's make a motion for a variance for one, one and a half feet up back on, what's the north, on the north side. So the, the building inspector requested the average there is six feet, so they need a, it's required ten feet, but the average six feet, if we have to do a special permit, they need one and a half feet, so, so let's make a vote on this, for this variance.
Alright, so I make a motion that we grant?
Okay, we have a motion by Jim to grant the variance for the setback, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, sorry, do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Jen, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, so five zero zero on the variance. Now we move to the special permit for the rest of the stuff.
You want to make a motion to grant?
Who would like to make a motion, Ken?
I will.
Okay, Jim would like to make a motion.
Without any special conditions?
Standard, standard conditions.
Without any special, with standard conditions.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, so we got five zero zero. Caddis, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Have you ever had any more fun in a meeting?
It's been great.
Come back more often, you know?
Come by and we'll heckle you.
We'll go down, I'll, I'll drive down there and I'll see if you're throwing beer cans, you're throwing beer cans off that porch next summer, I'll tell you.
You prepared it well, so. Thank you. Alright. J.C. Engineering Plan, please.
Do we get?
Yeah. We want to put per plan dated... Per plan. J.C.
Let's bring back...
Give me that date again?
Twelve eighteen eighteen. Sorry, twelve eight, December, twelve eighteen eighteen, right.
Twelve eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay. And let's get everybody to sign this before we go to something else. Give me the, the filed stuff back and the signatures. While we're in between, just for the board, see if I can make somebody else blush tonight. Sitting over to our right, over there all by himself with a Patriots jacket, shirt, is a, is a young fellow that's considering coming up and sitting on this side of the table.
Oh, that'd be great.
His name's Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I didn't expect you to do this.
Well, if I knew, if you, if you thought I was going to do it, you wouldn't have come, would you?
No, no.
There you go.
I'm seriously considering putting in an application for board, and with my abilities here in town and the longevity living here in town, I know this town very, very well.
That's good.
He's got a long, he's got a long, long, extensive background in fire prevention, fire control, and firefighting, and I figured another hothead wouldn't hurt us.
Thank you, yeah.
If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Yeah, no, no, we thank you, we're always in need of people and whoever's listening, we're still short two associate members, so...
I have the, the application in my house.
Yeah, can you please do?
And...
As you noticed, the first hearing, we, I couldn't sit on it, so we had to get an extension because we don't have, we don't have enough members.
We'll give it a shot. Now, let me ask you one thing, are you looking, is the board full, or is it...
No, it is full, but we need associates because a lot of hearings, I can't sit on it because I have a conflict, he can't, or he can't...
And we go on vacation a lot, so...
Vacation, yeah, that's Jake right there.
The way this board operates, there's five full-time, there's five full members and two associate members. The associates sit up here and participate, but the five members, if present, vote.
Okay.
If any member has a conflict, if any member isn't present, then we've got the alternates right there to fill in, so we...
So the alternates come to every meeting, every...
The alternates come to every meeting and participate, you still get to...
Sorry, you still need to talk, put in your...
Ask questions, put in your two, so let your opinion be known.
Okay.
Because few hearings down the road, if one of the regular members didn't show up for any reason, that alternate can vote.
I see.
Because he assisted, he, he, he assisted in all the hearings.
Understood.
Okay, and you can only miss one hearing for special conditions, your sake, or you have to do something, you can come back and board. You review the minutes and testify publicly that you reviewed the minutes and watched the tapes, or just the minutes, and you could jump back in it.
Okay.
You can only miss one.
Okay.
And the, the biggest reason, like I said, for some cases, like, like you saw the first case, I couldn't sit on it, so the, the Counselor continued it. In cases like you can have members, you're going to see the result now, what's going to happen for the next hearing, because we don't have enough members.
Okay.
Essentially, we can't function without alternate, without associate members.
We can't.
We don't function very well without associate members.
You know, if I may ask one question, you just brought something up.
Well, walk up closer so that if anything you ask, you know, so that you're just closer to the microphone, I think your voice is...
I work for the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy.
Let the mic heal. Yeah, sit down.
Yeah, that's okay.
Prime time.
Donald Trump's sitting home watching it, having a good time.
I work for the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy, and I've been with the organization for about thirty-five years, I'm an instructor coordinator up there. Now, you say you can only miss one?
No, I think you were misunderstood, I knew that you, I suspected you, what he, he was trying to say is that...
On a particular hearing?
So if, if, for example, a lot of hearings span multiple... So, if, if, for example, a lot of hearings span multiple, multiple meetings.
Okay.
So, if during the course of that series of, of hearings.
Understood, ma'am.
Someone's out, they can watch the, and catch up and attest to the fact that they reviewed the minutes and reviewed the hearing and so on and so forth. But they can only miss one, you could certainly miss more than one.
No, the reason why I asked that is because of our schedule, we are doing a lot of recruit training right now. And I'm on the road a lot and out of town everywhere, going everywhere, so I would try to make as much as I could. But when he said that, I went, mm, just no work for me. I misunderstood you, sir, I'm sorry.
You won't be fired.
Is there any questions you have on me, if I don't want to hold your meeting up?
We'd love to have you.
Selectmen, we don't question them.
Okay.
Yeah, please turn in your application, we, we need, we need associates.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for taking the time to come here tonight and, and watch what goes on and.
Don't feel bad, I was here last night and attended a selectman's meeting because I thought it was last night. But anyway, that's.
I know that.
Thank you.
You should, you should stay and watch this one, that's interesting one. All right, next one, seventeen dash eighteen, R M, R M L L C three oh three five.
Has this already been read in, is this coming back or is this?
Yeah, that's a continuous.
Okay.
All right, okay, public hearing's still open?
Oh, this is, um.
Mr. Tim?
Yes.
A point of order, there are only three members of the board who have sat on all this. I think, based on the, the case law, that you should be rehearing, rehearing this application. And so you can have a full complement of board members who will, who will vote on it, because you don't, you don't even have enough board members.
Right, because Jen never attended, but she missed a lot.
What, what are you talking about?
You missed like two of them, so you can't go.
I think I can, I've got the chronology.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Richard Serke, and to my right is Anthony Stella, the project engineer. Let me just refresh your memory as to the dates and, and the previous proceedings. This involves the former Hong Kong restaurant site next to the Water Whiz amusement park. The owner of the property, R M, R M Realty LLC, acquired the property because she owns the abutting amusement park, and the purpose was to use it as a parking lot for Water Whiz patrons. In March of twenty eighteen, I wrote to Mr. Requina stating that I believe the proposed use is allowed as a matter of right because there's no proposed use that requires a minimum number of spaces, and that since the property is in the C S zone, the use of the property as a parking lot should be considered to be allowed as a matter of right. In April, Mr. Requina responded by stating he believes that site plan approval is needed. Later in April, I filed an application with the Z B A seeking relief in the alternative. First, I stated that R M, R M appeals the decision by Mr. Requina that the use is not available, not allowable as a matter of right. And secondly, in the alternative, R M, R M sought site plan approval and a variance from the otherwise applicable requirements of Article fifteen of the bylaw. Now, hearing sessions occurred on June thirteenth, July twenty-fifth, August eighth, September twelfth, October tenth, December twelfth, and now it's January twenty-three. Since there are only four members of this board tonight who can sit on this matter, because the newest member has missed more, has missed all previous sessions, they'll never be able to be a five-person board to hear this. And if another alternate is appointed, he, he also will be unable to sit on this matter because he will not have attended the previous sessions. As a result, and I've discussed this with the chairman, and I also put in a call to town council today, as a result of the foregoing, given the fact that we are now over eight months from the date the petition was filed, R M, R M's petition, position is that the petition has been constructively granted because the decision was not made within a hundred days of the date on which the petition was filed. That date would have been in August of last year. Now, having said all of that, what I'd like to do is to explain to you using the, the chart that's on the board, and with the help of Mr. Stella, to relay to you issues pertaining to the impending reconstruction of Route twenty-eight, which is going to make wholesale changes to the layout of Route twenty-eight. And the, those wholesale changes, in my opinion, would make permanent improvements now impractical, because they'd only have to be undone once reconstruction occurs. And Mr. Stella can also explain to you that stormwater and, stormwater flow anticipated from the, the, red, let out location is not going to differ from the present stormwater flow, but I'm really stealing his thunder, so perhaps I could ask Mr. Stella to explain that.
Before, before we go, as you wish us, either you got to give us what you wish, you want to go construct or grant? There's no sense talking about it.
I just.
Or, or you want us to hear it, we will reschedule and start from scratch. We're, we're not going, I understand the hype and everything, there's no sense hearing it.
Okay, I just wanted to give you that.
I understand, I appreciate this, but there's, either we got to go either way, we cannot go halfway.
Well, that, that's my position, that I feel we're constructively approved. I just wanted to give you that information for the board's own background, so that you, you wouldn't have the wrong impression.
I, I totally understand, I thank you, but I can't, no sense hearing it unless we want to really hear it.
Yeah, no, that's the position.
Very well.
Thank you.
So, just clarification, I guess, we don't close the public hearing.
I will file something at the town clerk's office and then notify the abutters as I'm required to, so that anybody who could take an appeal can take an appeal. And then, after notifying the abutters, if there's no appeal taken within twenty days, then I'll record my decision at the registry.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You also have to file written, written requests for the, for fourteen days before the action takes place.
Within fourteen days?
Oh, yeah, I'll, I will comply with the statute.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for, your patience during this brief.
I understand that.
Process.
And I, 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 I just wanted to make a complete disclosure of.
No, I understand, it was nice of you to offer the courtesy of, of, of your position, but I personally think the applicant's been, been through enough, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, any correspondence? Okay, let's make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, thank you, thanks, Bob.